I skipped over it, I'm sorry, and Dan DeWitt.
Good evening, Dan DeWitt, I live in Wilshire Court in Wiltshire. My wife and I moved down here in 2008, and at that point, we understood the population was around 10,000. And it's not that way anymore. Most of the comments from the people tonight were about problems that have been generated with the net, with the growth that's still on. And they need to be addressed. And they don't think that they're getting the representation that they want. My point is that I think Denise is gonna need some friendly faces when she takes her seat on council. And what I would like to do is help the candidates that want to run for council and mayor during the next election cycle. Because one, three, and five orders are coming up, and the mayor's seat is coming up again. And I think that if we were able to do some community funding, kind of a, what do you call it? Yeah, build up a little orchester to the people that want to run for office, so they will know that they have a support, and that they might see the sense that we're getting better representation. Thank you.
Okay, number nine, under new business, this is first readings. Ordinance number 2021-23 to annex land totaling 85.87 acres on the 153 extension. This would be GR2. Do I hear a motion?
Seven, eight. Thank you.
Mayor, it is part of it is GR2, part of it is FRD. The contiguous to it is to the bottom left-hand side where the pond is. That portion is inside the city right now, so it is contiguous. It is off of the 153 corridor, which is wild ones right now. It did go before the planning commission. That one was voted for, oh, four to zero, one member absent for approval. We're requesting approval denied by council, and then second reading will be next one.
Tommy, that, so tonight is just the annexation portion.
Annexation and summon.
Yes.
The yellow part is FRD, the top part is GR2.
And when would that FRD plan be in place, or be?
He has that with him tonight, if council calls on him. He had to abide by the same rules for the three minutes unless council calls on him tonight to show them that plan.
Mr. Halkum, good deal, and new 253, all the way to place value, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Afforded.
No, sir. 153, and around, it's not, I don't think it's place value over to the left of it. It's contiguous down the bottom on site law.
I'd be interested in seeing those plans.
Where's the, where at, where's Paula? Oh, you got a copy of that one?
Well, I, I mean, the plan that you're showing. The plan that you're showing on the screen is essentially our site plan, and then I brought some additional elevations tonight, which was also a part of the supplemental package for the staff, along with the statement of intent and our NRI and stuff like that. But as Mr. Halkum said, the lots in yellow are the single-family detached lots. And that, that division between the two developments is the overhead power easement that runs through there. And then the lots in blue, the units shown in blue, are the townhome units. The GR2 zoning would be the other yellow portion along 153.
Okay, panel.
No, no, this is the larger parcel, the L shape, backwards L, I guess. I wish I had a pointer, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I got one right here.
So this is the GR2 parcel. And then the other entire parcel is the FRD with the single-family detached and the single-family attached. These are all for, the single-family detached and the single-family attached townhomes are all of course, civil property.
How many units with the FRD?
So in this section, we have, we have 146, 146 single-family detached lots and 140 single-family townhomes attached lots. For a total of 286 units, and that overall density is roughly 4.37 units per acre. Everything's shown in green. Green is common area, pocket parks and buffers around the exterior property, and then along, along Highway 153, the extension there as well.
And for the FRD section, how many points of access would there be to 153?
So for this, for this portion, for this first portion, there's two points of access, one here.
That's the GR2, isn't it?
No, the GR2 is here.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
So there would be another point of access later on.
So what we're looking at now is the FRD?
It's both of them.
Can I get a full-size copy of that plan, please, sir?
Absolutely.
The exits from either way, the coming enters, or exits out here, would be having to go Saluder Down Road toward Greenville, Saluder Down Road toward Easely, Olive Street, or go down 153, bypassing 123 behind Wal-Mart, home to the turnabout on the 153, or two out 85. Doesn't take a lot of traffic by pointing on the grid.
One of the things I'd like to point out is that, as an FRD, if there is any change proposed to this plan, it has to come back for a resuming, a major change. Now, there can be some minor changes done at a staff level. Minor changes are reducing the number of units, reducing the number of access points, reducing, but that's all minor. If there's a major change, like adding units or adding access points, it has to come back for a resuming.
That's correct, and that's a very good point of, an FRD, in my opinion, and I think staff would agree, is the most stringent zoning classification that you could have, because it, it limits, I mean, it basically, the statement of intent spells out density of access points, open space requirements. Everything is spelled out in the statement of intent, and that, that zoning classification itself becomes its, it becomes its own specific zoning. And if anything deviates from that plan, then it has to come back to council for a reapproval.
South Carolina does not allow conditional zoning. This is not conditional zoning, this is, it's, we don't allow contractual zoning. But this is a condition of the zoning, and it must be met, or it comes back to be changed. Now, if they decide to eliminate a few lots, that's to the better. But if they add lots, it comes back.
That's correct.
Any more questions?
What is the, what's the, what's the use for, the purpose for these? Is this, is there a future purpose for that, or is that green space, or what's the objective?
The, yes, sir, great question. That GR2 zoning classification, we didn't have a placeholder or a design or a plan for any of that. We selected the GR2 zoning district to allow for the potential uses in the future that our client would potentially put on that site. But when a plan is developed for that GR2 zoning, it would have to come back to, it would have to come back to, I guess it would have to come back to at least planning commission, staff.
It would be staff review, I think, and you might have to amend your stormwater management plan and look for how you're accessing it.
Sure. But right now, we do not have, my client does not have a plan for that, and it's not to say that, it's not to say that we would even be the engineer for that site. It was part of this, part of this overall master plan.
So what's there now? Is that wooded area?
It's cleared, it's, it's.
It's cleared?
It's a, there's a, I think, I think they did some grading on this site, maybe when they were building 153 to, to take dirt off of that site, to build 153. So it's, it's a cleared.
It was a farmland.
Farmland site.
I'd like, I'd like to have a packet of what's included in there.
It's too needle.
I can get, I can get large copies of everything sent to.
Everything into FRD, yes.
Like that one. That's right. I can, I can print out large copies for everyone if they need them.
Forward. It takes two, two readings, and I see no reason to hold it until we get there.
Come, come for the question. All in favor, this ordinance rate you right hand? Item B, ordinance number 2021-24 to annex land totaling 1.31 acres located on Highway 153. This would be FRD.
Seven, eight, mayor.
Have, have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, what this is, is if you see the circle in yellow, that bottom part of the L, the right side, is contiguous coming from the property that you just voted to annex. And what that does is come up to the left, and up to the next piece of property that will be next on the agenda. It's a 30-foot piece of property that is a needed piece of property to be annexed to the city, so that it will make the next parcel contiguous. There's a good chance it could be used for a sewer or electrical water, no guarantees, but it will be a needed piece of property to that top, I think to the top piece, or to the top piece of property. It'll be contiguous to them, and I think, when you go to the next slide for the next annexation, it will keep that contiguous there. No construction on, other than utilities that they need to take. It was approved by the planning commission for.
Speaking of that, I did see easily combined utilities for your own natural gas. Plenty of capacity to serve from the water sewer utilities.
You all correctly been in contact with Sleda and combined utility. They're aware of the annexations tonight. This 30-foot piece of property, that is not uncommon, we've done the same thing, connected the subdivisions on Olive Street. We did the same thing, connecting to Henry Conda, Cardinal Woods, and Outback. So it is, it is a common practice to keep contiguous as long as it's needed. It cannot be a right-of-way easement, it must be a needed piece of property.
Just a question, why does it have to be the FRD if it's just a 30-foot runway?
It, it could have been zoned anything, sir, it's just, they picked that because that was, I think that was the top half of that little piece of property, so they just kept it contiguous to that. There's no, no rhyme or reason to it.
No building in order to be accounted for.
No, it has to be zoned something, because everything in the city is zoned, so I guess.
It is the most restrictive that you can put on that, so that's a good thing to do.
I call for a question.
I have a call for a question. Item B, all in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Item C, ordinance number 2021-25 to annex pieces, parcels totaling 89.88 acres located off of 153 and Saluder Down Road. Do I hear a motion? This will be FRD. Motion?
Second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Mayor, this was also brought before the planning commission last month, it was voted for over to come into the city as an FRD. If you see the plan, we have the same engineering company, I believe, that's doing this one too. And with that being FRD, I'll be answering the other question that you asked me before, why that one's FRD 22, that's, they just kept it contiguous. But if you have any questions for the engineer, he is present. And it was voted in for over.
Same engineer, same company.
That is correct.
Can you point that out again?
Tell me again now. The.
Particular, this particular piece.
The whole top part, the whole, the whole green part on both sides of 153.
Except for the yellow piece on the top.
Except for the yellow piece at the top, and that will be a separate parcel coming in on your next reading. But you can see the amount of green space they have there, the water, stormwater and all that.
How many units would there be?
I have to call.
This is 275 lots for roughly 3.02 units per acre. These are all single-family detached homes for sale.
And that, that's Saluder Down Road, the top three?
Yes, sir.
It is.
Saluder Down Road. This is the annexation grid that we just discussed, and then the other property that we, the first property we looked at located. And then the yellow parcel on the, the yellow parcel on the corner is the next item on the agenda.
The fact is, you have a whole house.
I don't see a person in the neighborhood. Yes, sir.
What is the name of that section, what's there?
I'm not sure what's there currently.
Oklahoma, the yellow top corner.
What's the pink section?
The pink, the pink section is the property that the current landowner is retaining.
It is not part.
It is not part of this application. They, they will keep that property, and it'll be added to, I guess, the existing home site that, where they live.
Do you have marked on there where the retention pot is?
It's got, second. Yes, sir, we have ponds, we have ponds on here, here, large amenity in this area, ponds here, ponds here. And then, when you get, when you, when you guys receive the full blow-up plans, you'll be able to see more in detail of where the amenity centers are, where the walking trails are, and it'll match up with the statement of intent that we have for both of these. I understand, this is, I can hardly see that.
Most good, you got walking trails in this, very good.
And council, when he gets me, says over hand delivery, two, two, seven.
Seven.
Call for a question?
I have a call for a question. All in favor, this, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Ordinance number 2021-26, annex properties located on Highway 153, general commercial, designated general commercial. Do I have a motion?
Sorry, I'll go with.
Second, second. Do we have a pointer? You got, I just, just wanted to make sure, because I can't see. Oh, that's all right.
Mayor, council, this is the annexation request right here at this little corner for.
General commercial.
General commercial. It went before the planning commission with a 4-0 vote to approve, for future use for some type of commercial business there.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm looking, but how many acres is that?
1.7.
1.7 acres.
1.7 acres.
All a question?
Something a question. All in favor, this ordinance rate you right hand? Any opposed? Ordinance number 2021-27, to annex property off of, I'm assuming it's still 153 again. Meadow Lane, I'm sorry. Meadow Lane, it would consist of, be considered R7.5.
Motion to bring the floor.
Second.
Mayor, they made a request for 66.49 acres to be zoned R7.5. Right now, it is in the calendar, request annexation and zoning. The planning commission heard this on 10/18/21, after a length of discussion. It ended with a tie, which is a no vote. No, a no vote, not a no vote. A tie vote is turned down. I will say this, to kind of piggyback a little bit on what Mr. Watson said, and to tell you some stuff that's going on real quick, if you don't mind. We had some meetings, I had some meetings with some of the people in the neighborhood. And during the planning commission, it was talked about, about the 10,000 square foot blocks to be done on Daniel. We got all that worked out. There was some, and there is some misunderstanding on the road. It was always our intent, the road to come in and go up. The developer did find out some information on the little stream there, or creek, whatever you want to call it, but he was wanting to change from that because they cannot, having a problem getting access to it. And everybody's defense, that wasn't meant to be misleading, it's just things that's come up as I told us, way this work, this weekend on an email, is working problems. As we know, with the R7.5, it is not like a FRD. It normally does not have the set of plans that goes with it. 7.5 goes along with staff enforcing what council has in the books for zoning and stuff like that. But I did want to be upfront with the developers, mayor, that we had no intention of looking onto our existing roads to protect that existing neighborhood. So I wanted to record as staff going along with that, and I think we made, we talked with the developers and the engineers this morning, very frank with each other, and so that's where we stand right now.
If you repeat that, we're harmed.
Last part was that we had a very frank conversation this morning, and that staff had no intention of allowing any connection on Daniel. You know, we was, we was working with them, and they was working with us on having a connection. Word enters on to Pelsar Highway coming in, and maybe right there, or maybe over just a little bit on Meadow, I think it's Meadow, going into their subdivision, so they've come across problems with that. But I fully understand that, and I respect that, and I understand both sides of it. But I told the neighborhood that staff, unless directed otherwise, would not allow no connection to any existing street except Meadow down there at the end. I want everybody to understand, I think, I explained it to the owner and to the engineers this morning, and that's, that's where we stand right now.
But now that wanted to come off Daniel?
That's, that's, that's what they're wanting, and again, keep in mind that nothing has been drawn out, and that nothing's, normally it's annexation and a zoning.
The only thing that we're considering right now is the annexation and zoning of the properties. The plan is usually drawn after that's been granted, once the developer knows that he has the ability to go on. And so what's on the agenda today is not an approval of the plan. You all saw the flexible review district. Well, we do review the plan for the flexible review district. That is part of the package that comes in, and there are restraints that the developer agrees to. But this developer did not ask for that. He asked for a simple R7.5.
So Mr. Orton will ask you, just like Mr. Robinson said, for the, forgive me for asking you the third time. So the plan, going through staff, the plan would be that they would access through Meadow Lane into Pelsar Highway. Am I saying that correctly?
Unless I'm directed otherwise, I explained that to them this morning, that staff, I've talked with Eddie, who's over the roads. There are roads, and I've talked to staff, and our thought was, and I thought, I thought we've made it, and of course, I understand they run across some problems with the core engineers and all that, as I said before, and I hate that, I really do. But unless I'm directed otherwise, we would not allow, because we've been telling from day one, we would not allow them to see and to damage or them existing roads other than Meadow, which I know that's an existing road, we can fix that with looking up somewhere right, right in this area, right here. So it was not because of the creek that they've, it looks like they're wanting to go right there. Again, nothing's been given to us. I just do not want this property annexed and zoned, and then them come to staff, and we turn them, and there it sits. It's not fair to them either, to invest that money, to have staff turn it down, if we know that's not going to be. So I think, I think, you know, some, some could be worked out, we don't know before, that they can get some type of permit, and that we can work with them, as we've all originally planned, right here to come into their subdivision. and that we can work with them, as we've all originally planned, uh, here to, to come into their subdivision. And I don't have a problem with that. I still have, I still have a few issues, but that's the main issue, going forward. And I would, I would definitely make some type of assurance for it. I would vote in favor of this on second reading.
On second reading?
I am, I am willing.
It does take two readings.
Yeah, I, I'm willing to allow us to go through first reading to see more information. But I do, I do have a serious issue.
Likewise, Brian, I, I've got some reservations. We've all, we've all received a lot of emails on this regarding stormwater, which is very important in this area, the drainage in this area, the slope of the land, the condition of the streets in that area primarily cold drive, which is not particularly good condition. And of course, the major one is access to Pelzer Highway, because that's been such a high traffic area. And the question was brought up, likely so, that, you know, has a traffic study been done? And what's the Department of Transportation's position on this? So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions to be answered on this. But, but the first thing that's, the resolution states very plainly, you know, the question is, on our part, this is, you know, annexation, go, no go, to come in to the city. If it comes into the city, staff, the monkey's on your back, staffs, to make sure that all these things are resolved with the residents of White Acres. That's very important, that. This is a, this is a tough one here. But I would rather it be taken and controlled by the city of Eastlake than the alternative.
Again, as, as I've said, I think we've had a very frank discussion this morning. They understand that, that we, barring a special order from the mayor and council, staff has no indication, or has no plan to allow access to that location.
It should be turned down, and it goes to the county. The, um, stormwater management ordinances and other ordinances are much more relaxed than what you will see in the city. I think you're going to get a much better job in the city than you would if it were in the county. And, and that's the baseline. I hate to be a boogeyman, but that's the baseline. And I think we can do a whole lot better negotiating and working with ladies and gentlemen who will step up and negotiate with us, particularly staff being able to be persuasive. It's not going to go away. If, if there were way to, come on, I come out of Glen Laurel. I gotta go out to one thirty-five and eight, uh, but there's no way to make it go away. So the best thing to do is regulate the hangout.
If we hook yes tonight, annexing that laying in, we don't have time for our staff to work with these people. One month. And if they, they can't come up with a solution, we can always say no next month.
That's right.
That's right.
This is more of what, what, what I recommend, though, if we work with them, that's fine. They keep the request on the agenda. All you're doing is annexing and zoning it. Again, I've indicated to you what staff is going to do, and I've indicated to the owner what staff's going to do. Still would not recommend turning it down. He brings it for the second reading. He understands where I stand. And he will understand where y'all stand. But again, keep in mind, you're annexing and zoning it seven point five.
And as part of that negotiation with the developer, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure we would welcome input from the residents of White Acres on this, just to meet their input on this.
I don't know what to input, other than we're zoning it and annexing it. And I've tried to be plain, what the city staff is going to do on the roads. I don't know what else we could do, but yes, sir, I'll do anything I can.
So if we, if we know that we bring it into the city, second reading goes back again, and they have to turn the property, there's a possibility that they still going to be off Daniel. Coming off Daniel.
Ms. Brazil, I very plain to city staff will not approve an entrance onto Daniel, and claim to the developer and to their engineers. So again, what we're doing is annexing and zoning. I've indicated, and I've told everybody what staff will hold firm on, unless I'm directed differently by mayor and council.
If we do refuse it, let's say tonight, the county guy, what would the county, the road be acting, connected on our two street?
They would still have to, as they could do something with the state somehow. But, yeah, they, they, they still better come to us for, for access to our streets.
We still refuse.
Mayor, well, I wish we said this to council before, and I'll say it to the citizens who are here tonight. I do not like to vote to kill an ordinance on first reading. I think everyone deserves opportunity to hear the other side and respond to it by a second reading. But I strongly encourage Darren Webb and Waverly Wilkes to talk to the citizens who live in White Acres and reach some accommodation with them. And I appreciate Jay Hudson giving us this information, and I need to look into the land development regulation ordinance, which he says, says a development serving fifty-one or more units shall have a minimum of two entrance exit points. Thank you.
Call for a question. All in favor of this ordinance, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight authorizing sale of property at one fourteen Lindwood Road to Abby Duncan for eight thousand dollars. Do I hear motion?
Motion, bring it to the table, please.
Motion, second, second. I think most of this you heard in the work session, and so gentleman owns the property beside it. It's totally up to us which direction to go. Uh, if you want to hold it, you hold it. If you don't, we can settle doing, and it's up to y'all. Unless you need any information from Tommy as far as the layout of the property.
Just, just repeat. I know we talked on the work session, just repeat, everybody. What's his purpose, or what's, what, why is he doing it? Why is he...
All, all we know is he owns the property beside, he's adding to his property, uh, because he owns the house beside, excuse me, owns the house beside, and he will be adding to his property.
Mr. Mayor, I'm familiar with that property. It goes about halfway back, and I mean, it just goes off a fifteen foot. It might, it would cost, take thousands of dollars to fill that in and make it big enough, I think, to build a house. And so naturally, from the white acres, a real estate agent phrased it after what a frager would say would probably be different, while they're considering what it would cost to make it a little more.
Yeah. It just shows that he's got more interest in it than just to build it back. Any other questions?
Call for a question?
Call for a question. All in favor of this ordinance, raise your right hand. Any opposed? We show it carries. Item ten, action by city council authorizing the sale of property on Esther Drive. Make motion.
Second.
Second.
I, I'll send this as a resolution.
It's, we don't really have to do that, right? We just have to have a vote?
Well, we got, we, we need to have an ordinance, and we may have one, and that's what I was raising at work session. I can't remember if we've already done an ordinance. I'll get Lisa, I'll work with Lisa tomorrow and check and see. If we don't have an ordinance, we'll have to have an ordinance, so.
Okay. Yeah, what, oh.
So this is actually just authorizing us to begin the process?
That's correct, negotiating.
This piece of property?
Yes, sir.
And it is how large?
Tell me, you remember exactly what you...
Well, we, yeah, we, we, right at a half acre, we cut some property off there to go to the, the fire station. We kept it over ten thousand square foot, because that's ten, R ten there, and we kept the setbacks, uh, again, without having it, when we have it redone, uh, I'd get the exact measurements on it. But, uh, it's, uh, it's gonna be a little, little less than a half acre, because we did take, take a little bit off to go to the fire station.
This, this property was, we were leasing this.
We're really getting out leasing it, that's correct, yes, sir. Month by month, I think, for nine hundred dollars a month?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, nine hundred dollars.
And considering we're gonna have to build that burn, look, uh, that won't be a thing.
No, we won't, no, we won't have to have burn, no, sir.
Have water coming out and back to the fire department, they don't want?
No, sir, it's not going to affect it. We're, all they've got to do is, as the water comes off the parking lot where we're at now, all the water that's in the parking lot right now has a place to go. The only water that will come off of these, this side, that, from the parking lot into these folks' yard, is just that rainwater right there, it's all that's going to come off, yeah. And, and, and all we've got to do is put a swell, uh, and I think they're going to be doing some work there. Jay Davis is going to be doing the work, putting the grass in to fix that anyway, so that's, they won't have impact from us, no, sir. And there's a creek behind there anyway, so, right behind this house, yeah.
So is this gonna, um, authorizing this further sale and trying to come back with the ordinance in the next month? Or how are we gonna...
Well, what, what our plan is, if, if, if you pass this, is staff will go out and start researching a real estate company or someone that can sell it for us at a price, and then bring it back to you. It may not be next month, it may be the next month, just depending on how long it takes. And then we'll be, then we'll be voting for a sale.
Which way would be better, ultimately, with a real estate agent or the frager, where we, what have we got?
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna go with the most money we can get.
Well, that, that would be a phrase.
Yeah.
For our...
I mean, we're gonna have to pay for the trade, but we get an actual plan, dollar.
And we own this property, so, you know, it's, it's a house, already owned, it's, you know. We're not voting to sell it tonight, we're not doing that.
Well, excuse me, I think we need to find out if we have passed an ordinance, or, or not.
But I think we can find that out, because we can do that now in next week, next month, correct, Brian?
Yes, sir. But if, if we have already passed an ordinance, we don't need to do anything.
To sell it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I...
And see how we pass ordinance if we don't know who we're selling it to. That's what the ordinance would say, who we're selling to.
I think we bought it with the intention to resell it in the future. We may have already authorized that, just actually. Right, and then just, just on a quick look, I was, I was looking at my phone, that we've done one of those to lease it. I don't remember if we've done it.
I know we've done that, because we've had to do that every time, at least.
You might say this is giving our general blessing to proceed.
Right, that's all. Yeah, we're not, we're not selling it, I promise you that, no.
Call for a question?
Yeah, I've got a call for a question. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Item B is approval to accept grant awarded to the police department. And all this takes is, is a vote also, do I hear motion?
So, okay.
Motion, second, second. And I will let, uh, the chief kind of explain, uh, the grants that he has gotten here, and the reason that, uh, he's brought it before us is it is a change for us as far as spending money, and it is hiring a, a new employee.
That's right, one officer, mayor. I'm super proud of these, uh, three grants. They total about two hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars in total. It started, Michael Ambrose researched, wrote, and got approved by all three of these grants. The impaired driving, the second one there, the impaired driving countermeasures for a hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred fifty-seven dollars, um, is the one that allows us to hire one other personnel, um, pay his salary, offer his benefits, and a brand-new vehicle, uh, with fully equipped. The only caveat to that particular grant is there's a ten percent buy-in for the equipment only, which will cost about sixty-three hundred dollars roughly, um, for us. Other than that, they're all one hundred percent reimbursable, and they're one-year grants, except for the impaired driving, certain countermeasures, it's a two-year grant, uh, that we obviously have to reapply for, but intend to get it for the second year.
And the gentleman that got the grants is standing right back there, so.
The, the chief didn't brag quite enough. This is the first set of grants that we have had in years and years and years. And Sergeant Ambrose went out, found them, wrote them up and got them. And he's going to have to keep up the old paperwork that he has to do to prove that we're spending the, uh, funds appropriately. But I, I thank you, I thank you. Let's find some more reading, man.
And I want to congratulate him. I think he's got another child, I wonder what we just found out about, right?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Look back, Grant. And also I want to thank Sergeant Ambrose, because he has done wonderful job of getting his grants. He's looking at to get more. He's about setting the, the city money. And, and also thank the chief and the rest of his staff, because the chief has actually, he's come in, he's got these guys on board, I think they're doing things that they never got to do before, and that's a great thing for the city of Eastlake. It, it's just encouragement, and it's a thing that they want to come to the city of Eastlake, they'll play this police force. And I thank you, chief, and I thank you, Ambrose.
Thank you. Did you say that? And, and let me clarify tonight, if voting this, this does implement the grants, that they, that, that way he can move forward in implementing them, and go ahead and order the equipment that he needs.
Call for a question?
Call for a question. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Item eleven, new resolutions is, um, to appoint new city administrator. Motion, motion, okay. Second.
Second.
Second, okay. And Dennis, if you want, comment a question?
If you think so.
Okay. Well, I think most of y'all already, most of y'all already know, I think, uh, during the council meeting, we, uh, went over and interviewed those, and we brought it down to this person here. And, uh, what we're needing tonight is just the, the support of the, the, the mayor and council to go into a, um, MOU with this individual, so that we can get him, uh, signed up and get his drug tests done, and hopefully have him on board by December the sixth.
Dennis, you want to tell us a little about him?
You want me to tell you about the guy who's taking...
I'll tell you why, I'll tell you this. Dennis should have started talking, start with him, because Dennis worked harder on this than me, because his wife has told him it's time to come home.
She, she certainly has. Um, the individual who, uh, city council is about to appoint, I think you're about to appoint, is Shannon Baldwin. He's the current town administrator, town manager of Lake Lure, North Carolina. He's been with that city for seventeen years, the, uh, first fourteen as the, uh, planning director, and then the last three as town manager. Prior to that, he was with the town of Saluda, North Carolina, and then the town of Highlands, North Carolina, both in administrative and planning capacities. He, uh, has twenty-six total years of experience in municipal management, municipal government, city council interviewed, uh, all the city councils interviewed, Mr. Baldwin, as well as another... well-qualified candidate, and they thought that Mr. Baldwin was the best qualified candidate for the City of Eastlake. So, I...
Any other questions, gentlemen?
I got a one to add to it, one to even mention, but I did a little research on Shannon Baldwin, too, but in addition to his staff duties, he has been an elected county commissioner for Henderson County, North Carolina, Hendersonville, that counted that. So he's, he's seen both sides of it, so I think that's good to see diversity of what Shannon Baldwin can bring to us. I think he'd be a good addition to us, got a lot of depth and planning, which is one of the things that we need in the city for the future. So I'm looking forward to working with Shannon Baldwin.
Mr. Mayor, before we vote on this, I'd like to take the time to say thank you, Dennis. He has been an asset to the city, he's a gentleman, he's a scholar, he's a most knowledgeable man, he's always got the correct answer. He never doubts, he never slacks off, he just hands it to you. If you need it, he knows it. So we thank you for what you've done for the City of Eastlake.
I would like to join in with that as well, absolutely, thank you, Dennis.
This, this will be, this will be Dennis's last vote, is that right?
Tomorrow's my last, sir.
He said with a smile.
Yeah.
Hey, look, you didn't really say that.
I'll be on call to the mayor, if he needs city assistance whatsoever.
Anybody else, I think, is number out of four.
And I, and I will say, Dennis plans on having a couple of different meetings with Mr. Baldwin before he comes, to hand him over all of the pertinent information about our American Rescue Plan, and all the things that he's been doing since he's been here. They're gonna, I think, just have a little meeting, and let him release all that information, give him all his passwords and all that good stuff, so.
Call for a question?
Call for a question. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? All right, by here, motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I said I would stay, and if they had any questions, I would...
I'm good, thank you, man.
Yeah.